So this is the Board of Selectmen's special meeting, March sixteenth, 2020. And this is our, I believe Fairfield's first Tella Town meeting in light of the current COVID pandemic situation across the country. So we are, this is the first time we're trying this. The Board of Finance will be trying it this evening. I did a press conference today. It says I'm here to give a COVID update. We did a press conference today that's up on the internet so that people can see that. So I'm not going to reiterate anything. People can look at that and get some more information. And we'll be posting on the Fairfield Town website updates as we move forward about how we're going to be providing town services going forward. So, um, okay, call to order. Do we pledge allegiance? I guess I'm going to have to lead the pledge because I'm the only one here. So please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so we have a reappointment when we didn't, we asked that the gentleman not attend. And so it's to hear and consider and act upon the following reappointment of the Gulf Commission, Liam E. Heron of fifty-three Forest Avenue for a term four twenty to four twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
So when, can I just, when you are going to speak, can you just say who you are before you speak going forward? Because that's one of the things I was told we're supposed to do.
Go ahead Nancy.
This is Nancy Lefkowitz, and I will make a motion to reappoint Liam Heron.
I'll second it.
Got to say who you are, Tom. You have to say who you are, Tom.
I did.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
And I guess since I'm the only guy, it's easy.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye, from Nancy Lefkowitz.
Very good.
Flynn, aye.
Okay, next.
I, I do have one point of, a question. There was another appointment on the table for someone that had resigned. I was curious if you knew off the top of your head Brenda, if Ryan Scully, I'm sorry, yeah, I can't remember off the top of my head, there was a member who was resigning, and then there was going to be a vacancy, and there is somebody that the Gulf Commission had put forth to fill his place. So I just wanted to make sure that was on our radar.
Yes, there were several applicants. I'm still going through those, so that's why I'm moving it to the next month meeting.
Got it, okay.
Very good. So next up, we have Chiefs McCarthy-Litty and Deputy Chief Dunn and Smith are calling in. And this is item number five, Police Chief and Fire Chief to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution approving a lease between the Town of Fairfield, Town of Westport, Sacred Heart University for premises to be used as joint nine-one-one emergency communication center as recommended by our Fire Chief and our Police Chief. Resolve that the lease between the Town of Fairfield and the Town of Westport as tenants and Sacred Heart University as landlord, covering premises consisting of approximately twenty-nine hundred square feet of space located on the first floor of the east building of Sacred Heart University's property located at fifty-one fifty-one Park Avenue, Fairfield, Connecticut. Upon the terms and conditions and for the uses of those purposes contained in said lease is hereby approved and further resolved that the first select woman be and hereby is authorized to execute such documents as may be required to effectuate this resolution. Do I have a motion?
This is Nancy, and I'll move the item as read.
Okay.
Can I make a second here?
Okay, discussion?
Hold again. Oh, did I already sign that?
Somebody is not muted and is speaking. Okay. Is there any discussion?
No discussion from Nancy.
No, I'm good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, next item. Item number six. Ed Bowman, I think, is on the line, is he?
He doesn't seem to be calling in though.
We have a call-in user. Oh, he's not on.
Unless he's this caller, let's see. Ed, are you there?
No, he's there. I see Ed Bowman.
I see him, but he's got no phone.
Oh, he doesn't have a phone. He didn't call in. He might not have, okay. Okay. Item number six, Assistant DPW Director requires RTM approval to hear and consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Assistant Director of Public Works. Whereas federal monies are available under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to the public law ninety-three dash three eighty-three as amended and whereas pursuant to the chapter one seventeen, part. Can I waive the reading of this?
I can move to waive the reading as a prop, I'm happy to move it.
Okay. Tom?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we've all have a copy of this. This is the block grant for the Water Pollution Control Authority, the microgrid, and the amount of not to exceed three hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and is hereby approved and further resolved that the first select woman authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to expend such grant, and that the first select woman is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to execute in all necessary documents to secure said grant. Is there any discussion?
Not for me.
Tom?
I am fine on this one, thank you.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second that, that's Tom.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, Anthony Calabrese is on. If anybody has any questions. So the item is Parks and Rec Director to consider and act upon the capital project request for the Roger Ledlow Middle School turf field in the amount of four million forty-five three sixty. Do I have a motion?
This is Nancy, I'll move to, for discussion.
Okay.
So can you guys hear me?
Yeah, can you second, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Anthony, go ahead. Yes, we can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
I apologize, I thought the fireworks were first, but we can go with this one. Given, given light of everything that's going on in town right now, I'd like to withdraw this, this from the table right now.
Oh.
I don't think it's the right time to discuss this.
I appreciate that, Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, I agree.
Anthony, I don't-
Can we table this?
Okay, yes. Well, let's make a motion, you made a motion to, to move this to a, to a meeting in the future?
Yes, Anthony, and I, can I request that Anthony, tell us what date you want to talk about it, or do you want to talk about it at all?
Well, what I'm worried, Anthony, what I'm worried about is if we table it, you know, I remember Carl Dickman's rules to regulate, when you put something on the table, you can't take it off the table, or, and I don't want to say which date's certain, because we don't really know what's going on. So a date in the future, I think, might be the best motion.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine without a date certain.
Okay.
So why don't we just take no action and let it die?
Well, we want to postpone it to a date not yet determined.
I don't, I-
So that we can bring it up at any time.
Fine, turn up, I don't, that. I've never done it to a date not yet determined. I've always just let the motion die and move on to the next. Take no action.
Item number eight. Purchasing Director to hear, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contract with fireworks by Grucci to provide all labor, materials, equipment, all else necessary to provide Independence Day fireworks celebration as detailed in bid number twenty twenty dash forty-eight for the pricing detailed by fireworks by Grucci Incorporated. Bid submission for the total cost not to exceed fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it, this is Nancy.
Yeah, make sure we all use our names too, so the public, so the public can hear that. Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion of any kind?
Anthony, do you have a presentation to make on this before we discuss?
This is Anthony. No presentation to make. The only thing I wanted to make clear is that while we are paying for this, you know, fifty-two thousand dollars, we would pay for this July, in our contract it does say, you know, anything, obviously, force of God, act of God, force majeure event, nobody would be liable, and we would, we'd get our money back, so. I didn't think there's a big risk to this one.
Can I ask a couple questions on it? Nancy, go right ahead. This is Tom, but go right ahead Nancy.
I, I was simply going to ask if that's the case, Anthony, has our, is everyone vetted that needs to the contract to make sure that all of that is in line? Because if that's the case, and you're supportive of moving ahead, I would be fine with it.
My understanding is the town attorney has looked at this, purchasing's looked at it, and we have all the proper insurance in place from the vendor and everything. It's the same vendor we've used the last several years.
Is Jim Brown, is Jim Baldwin there?
Yes.
Jim, can you confirm that you've reviewed the contract and are fine with the terms?
This is Jim Baldwin, yes, I can confirm that.
Thank you. This is Tom again. Another question, Anthony, what budget is this coming out of? My only concern is July fourth is the new fiscal year, that we do not have an improved budget for that year yet. Is this coming out of this year's budget, or will it be coming out of twenty twenty-one?
Based on the way it's written, it comes out of this year's budget, so the current budget that we're in. And it comes out of Parks and Recreation, Special Department Supplies. It's a eighty-four thou, eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollar line item between fireworks, Memorial Day Parade, and concerts.
And this is consistent with the previous expense and consistent with the amount for that line item?
This is a couple thousand dollars higher than the last couple contracts. I think the last contract was around forty-five thousand dollars, and this is at fifty-two.
What's the reason for the increase? That's a pretty decent sized increase.
They did not give us any, any specification, and this went out to bid. I believe they were the only bidder. Gerald Foley could confirm that for me if I'm spoken there.
So is he there?
Who, no, Gerald, he's in the call-in, I think.
Gerald Foley?
Yes.
I'll, Gerald, go ahead.
Can you hear me? This Gerald Foley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we were not, the rationale for the, the last time we went out to bid with this was about five years ago. So basically, the vendor had held their pricing for five years, so that, so that as much as it looks like it's a big jump, the pricing was actually five years variance from when we last bid into where we are now. And they were the only bidder.
And this is Tom again. Are they holding this pricing for the next number of years?
We asked them to hold it for multiple years, correct.
How many years is this contract, if you don't mind just confirm, please?
Yeah, so what we did is, we, the way it's structured is, is we're entering into a single event at this time, but with the way the bid's structured is, is one award plus four renewals. So what would happen was is, we would invite them to renew next year, and then if the bid came in higher, in other words, their offer came in higher, we could opt to go back out again.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and so what we'll do, Gerald, to Gerald Foley again, so what we'll do is, is we can confirm that so that for, you know, because the other quirky thing with the fireworks performance is, is typically the day after the event is when you would want to secure it for the following year, because, because that's how far out in advance they book their services. So what we could do is, is we can get confirmation from them that they would hold their pricing for subsequent years, and then we could bring it back to the board earlier on than we normally would have, just to get, you know, validation of that for the subsequent year, so that if we did have to go out to bid, we'd go out to bid immediately. We wouldn't wait until the new year to go back out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you Nancy. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Item nine. To hear and consider and authorize purchasing authority into proposed contract with Hibbard and Rosa Architects to provide architectural services during the design and construction administrative phases for the roof replacement project at Osborne Elementary School. This is something we already, obviously, voted on as an issue, a detailed thing, and this has all been reviewed by our town attorney, and everybody has checked off every single thing that needs to be checked off. So it's detailed in RFQ in the amount not to exceed twenty-nine forty. Motion to approve?
This is Nancy, I'll motion, I'll move to approve.
I'm seconding it.
Okay, any discussion?
None for me.
No, I'm all set on this one.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten. To hear and consider and authorize purchasing authority to enter into a proposed contact with Giacobi Construction LLC to provide all labor, materials, equipment, and all else necessary for the supply and install of interior door.
I'm going to read the reading of all of the contracts. We all have the agenda in the interest of time.
Thank you Nancy. I, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so item number ten, and you all have it in front of you, and of course, the public can read this, we'll be posting it along, it was already posted with the agenda online. So, any discussion?
Jim, Jim Baldwin, I just want to confirm that all these items that are going, coming before us for a contract now, that have previously been approved in terms of budgeted amounts and items, they have all been reviewed by you, and you are fine with all these contracts?
That is correct. It's true of all the items on your check.
And Mr. Foley, can you confirm to us that appropriate bonds and insurance are in place with all these vendors relative to these items?
Yes, they will be, once the authorization is, has been approved. So, so far, we have not, so what we will do is, we secure, we secure the bonds, we ensure the bonds and the insurance after the award, because the companies won't give us the bonds until we make an award to them.
But how do we know they're valid bonds? That's my question. I don't want to issue like-
Right, so my office will, will go through, and we'll call up the bonding companies, and we'll validate that. So we have a form in place that we're, we're doing like, basically, it's a checkbox, but we go through and we will basically validate that the license to do business in the state, that the, the performance bond is valid, that it's active, and we'll, we have a whole list that we go through and we validate that.
So all, so has the vetting process on these items been done relative to the bonds, so we're not going to get surprised once we sign?
Well, no, what we did is, we vetted the bid bonds, and so now, once we go out and we get the performance bond, we'll redo that same process again.
What I'm trying to get to is to make sure that we're not approving a contract here, and then don't have bonds in place later. I hear what you're saying, but how do we know that it's easy for them, or they can get these bonds? Is there any type of legwork that's done before we approve these contracts?
Well, what we do is, typically, the company, when they submit their bid bond, they tell us who their, their performance bond is going to be with, so we know that they can get the bid bond, so to answer your question, yes. So they should be able to get their performance bonds. And so we wouldn't, as, as a component of that whole review, we will have performance bonds for the companies that are required to have them.
Should we ensure that we get those bonds before anything is executed, or before they can start work?
Yes, we, we tell them they're not allowed to start work unless they have the bonds in place.
And we follow up on the bond documents, we don't just take their word for it? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, yes. Yeah, so what we do is, when we get the bond, we actually have a checklist I was referring to, that we goes back, we go back to the, to whatever company it is that they're listing on the performance bond, and we call them, and we validate all the information with the bonding company.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
So we have the motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries.
This is Nancy, Madam First Selectwoman. In the interest of, since you have validated and, and the town attorney has confirmed that all the proper procedures have been in place, is it possible to, to take the following items all as one?
Sure.
And approve items ten through fourteen as one, in one motion? Or, I'm sorry, item, I think?
Item eleven, twelve, thirteen, yeah, because these are all things that have been obviously reviewed by the town attorney and my administration, and the purchasing director.
So I would make the motion that we take into, I guess, items eleven-
So items eleven through fifteen?
Uh, yes.
Yeah. Waive the reading and take them as one item to just vote for them all in one motion?
Correct.
Can we do that?
That would be my motion.
Jim, can we do that?
Yeah, I think you should identify what they are.
All right, so I'll just, I'll just brief summary. Item number eleven is, is to consider, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into proposal contract for tree removal services, and that number twelve is to enter into a contract to replace the elevator at Fairfield Woods brands library, so it's ADA compliant. Item thirteen is to enter into a contract with Santa Unleashed Gasoline, Town of Fairfield various gasoline storage tanks, in the, in the amount not to exceed three hundred thousand, two hundred and forty. And number fourteen is to enter into a sales agreement with Standard Oil to supply and delivery ultra-low sulfur diesel for various diesels, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty, one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then number fifteen is to consider and authorize the purchasing authority of the trash compactors at the town's transfer station facility. This is something we actually talked about during one of our meetings and voted on as a detail in bid twenty twenty in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-three zero fourteen. Those are the items.
Okay. Can I ask a few questions on these items, and then we can vote?
Sure.
Number one, are all these items within the budget that has been approved for these individual tasks and items?
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. Foley, do you have, was that you? This is Tom again.
Gerald Foley, yes. Yeah, so Gerald Foley answering yes. These, these items are all with, all within budget.
Okay, and these items all went through the appropriate bid process?
Yes, Gerald Foley, yes.
Okay, for the Standard Oil, we just approved the budget last week for twenty twenty-one, is this, is this purchase, this advanced purchase and contract consistent with the budget?
We will be less than the budget.
So we're saving money as compared to the budget? Can you make sure that gets reported out to the other town bodies?
Yes, yes, yes. So what, what'll happen on that one is, is the numbers you see there, to make it so we can kind of connect all the dots, the number that you see listed in your request authorization, that is the time when the bids were due, so those were the numbers, so I could, you kind of connect them back. So since, since the bids have been received, there's been drastic productions in both, both commodities. First item being the gasoline, and the second item being the diesel fuel. And if you, if, if time permits, I'll be happy to, to give you more, and more depth information in regard to the volumes, or dollar amounts, if you'd like me to.
I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that the other town bodies have the benefit of the appropriate contract that's been entered, and whatever budget that eventually ends up getting approved inconsistent, is consistent with the contracts we've signed, or what we've executed.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. All right.
And one last, Ms. First Selectman, the First Selectwoman, my apologies, on the transfer station, are we confident that these are the appropriate machines, given the compactors, given the issue we've had in the past with these compactors? And what is the disposition of the compactors that are there now?
What is the disposition of the compactors?
Are we selling them? Are we, do we have to scrap them, or is the vendor taking them back for a discount? They're pretty new and not really used.
Yeah, we did talk about that when we worked on this. I believe Brian Carey addressed the fact that they're not really worth much because they've been used, but if he wants to elaborate again and reiterate what he said last time, Brian, do you want to?
Yeah, so the, the contractor who's supplying the new compactors, there was a line item in the bid for a deduct based on taking the old compactor, so the number is reduced by twenty thousand for both compactors.
Yeah, that's right.
They're not in great shape.
Twenty thousand total, or twenty thousand each?
Twenty thousand total. Ten thousand apiece.
Say it again, I'm sorry, Brian.
Ten thousand apiece. So they-
And this, is this the same company that sold us those, those compactors?
No. No.
So this is a different vendor?
Correct. He's been fully vetted.
Right. You get, you shared this with us when we approved this item, the name of the company and all that.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, I was just, I was trying to figure out whether anything has changed, and whether we were trying to still negotiate the price points on that. That's the part I didn't remember, which is why I asked.
No, we thought that was a good deal, just for the sake that we've had other people look at them, and they're basically scrapped because of the amount of use they've gotten in the short period of time. They've just been on, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone?
This is Nancy, I don't have any.
Okay. Tom, do you have any more questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So we have the motion, I think we have the motion on the table, second, so all in favor of items eleven through fifteen?
Aye.
Nancy?
Oh, yes, aye.
Aye, and aye. Motion carries, items eleven through fifteen. Prue? Okay, great. Last item on the agenda is item number sixteen, to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by our tax collector in the amount of sixty-two- refunds as recommended by our tax collector in the amount of $62,737.39. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
I will second that.
And the only thing for public record is to state that one of us, which I guess it would have to be you, Brenda, just to confirm that you see the amount, and it's confirmed, and you, someone has reviewed it, and it's correct and true.
Yes.
For the record.
Yes, $62,737.39. Any additional comment, or questions?
No.
Okay, all right, all right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
That was Tom Flynn, and Nancy?
Yes, aye, Nancy.
Nancy, and aye, too, so that's motion carries, all right, very good, so I am going to call us into private executive session, and I believe we're going to go off these speakers and come on to one of our cell phones, Nancy and Tom, and we're just going to merge you guys on.
Okay, my home phone is the clearest number.
All right, what is that again, oh, we're not going to say that on national television, why don't you just-
I'll text you.
Do we need to do that, we could mute the public access, and Jerry could mute TV.
Yeah, he's going to, okay, so you guys can-
So, if you want, we can take off, you know, the other-
Make that motion.
Private executive session, pending litigation.
I make the motion.
And it, this is-
Can someone-
I can second.
I made the motion, it's seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, I'm making a motion to come out of executive session, I mean, I'm asking for a motion to have us come out of executive session.
Don't move.
And this is Nancy, I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries, I am going to now make a motion to proceed pursuant to the recommendations of the town attorney in the pending litigation case of Rilling versus Town of Fairfield, do I have a motion?
I will move, don't move, this is Nancy.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Aye.
Okay, if there's any, is there any new business, or anything?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me, this is Nancy.
Okay, well, thank you, I just want to say, for the record, I appreciate the Board of Selectmen members Nancy Lefkowitz and Tom Flynn for participating via teleconference, obviously, we are living in very different times, we haven't seen anything like this in our country in a century, and so we're trying to do our best to have some semblance of a normal government, and conduct as much business as we possibly can, and while maintaining the health and safety of not only the members who serve our community, but also the public in which we serve, so I appreciate your cooperation and your patience, and I'm always here if you guys need to talk to me or call me.
And Brenda, this is Nancy, I just want to say thank you for taking decisive action, I know some people are going to be, mostly people are going to be grateful for that, there will be some people that may feel frustrated or inconvenienced, but I think that your decisive action can help flatten the curve if everyone follows and complies with what you've laid out, and I just wanted to thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Nancy.
I wanted to also say good job, I think your updates are being well received, I think your decisions are sound, I support them fully, and I'd like to also extend my thanks to the rest of the administration and your emergency response team for all their hard work and efforts to date.
Thank you, they've been really great. Well, we have a good town, guys, and the more, if you can help disseminate this information, I think it'll be, well, better received throughout our community, and we can all keep each other safe.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Our motion to adjourn?
Don't move, this is Nancy.
Tom, can you second?
Oh, he left.
Second, all in favor, aye.
Aye, aye, thanks, bye.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.